Tonight, not Jolly, so that's why, sorry.
All right, so we have all members of the council with us this evening. Council members, I have a few announcements, but I will defer to council if any council members would like to make any announcements this evening. Now is your opportunity to do so. A council member, Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. As the city council's representative on the pension board for the city, I have the honor of congratulating our recent retirees. And this one is close to home for us. We'd like to wish a very happy retirement to Judy Preby and thank her for her many years of service to the city as well. So Judy, thank you very much. I think we're in good hands, but we miss you nevertheless. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jolly. Anyone else? All right, I have an announcement. A few. Sadly, the subject of my next announcement, I don't think is with us, and he usually is. And this is an opportunity to wish the Z-Man, Mr. Todd Zalinsik, our outstanding Director of Engineering at the City of Livonia, a very happiest milestone, a very happy milestone birthday on October 6th, which is tomorrow. So I see that Mr. Zalinsik, the almost birthday boy has joined us. I thought maybe he had gotten the festivities started a day early. But happy birthday, Todd, wishing you all the best, and we appreciate you, and the city certainly appreciate you.
Thank you, Kathy. Madam President?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We were hoping you'd have on the birthday party hat, but...
That's, Mr. Cameron has that.
Okay, all right. And I know that the mayor is going to make an announcement and introduction, but I do want to take this opportunity to introduce our new Director of Legislative Affairs, Ms. LaShawn Thomas, who is with us for the first time this evening and who I have not had the opportunity to meet personally, but will this week. Welcome, Thomas. We are delighted to have you with us, and I know the mayor is going to do a more formal introduction. And I would also like to announce two X items that we will have at the end of the meeting. As most people probably know, that will require a special motion to go to the X items at the end of the meeting, and so we will cover those X items at the end of the meeting. That's the end of my announcements. At this time, I have the privilege and the pleasure of announcing our department heads. The department heads that are with us at just about every meeting, Mr. Mark Taramina, our Director of Planning and Economic Development, our city clerk, Susan Nash, our city attorney, Mr. Paul Burnier, our information technology and information director, Casey O'Neill, who stays behind the scenes, Mr. Todd Zalinsik, the aforementioned birthday boy, our Director of City Engineering, of the city's engineering department, Ms. Sarah Kowicz, who is now managing the council office. Let me see who we have on. We have Mr. Varga, Mr. Dave Varga, our Director of Administrative Affairs. We have Ms. Linda Scheel, our outstanding city treasurer. And I do not see any other department heads, other than, of course, we have the pleasure of having the mayor with us this evening. Good evening, Mayor. And at this time, we go to, I do not have any other announcements to make, although actually I do have one. And I would like to congratulate Mr. Donovan on a very, very nice story that was done on him on WXY TV last week, talking about his ability to participate in our city council meetings via Zoom. And at the time that the city passes ordinance allowing remote participation by members of the military, and this covered not only the city council, but any of our boards or commissions, the idea of participation in Zoom meetings seems somewhat extraordinary. Very shortly, not too long after passing that ordinance, we have now learned what it's like for everyone to participate via Zoom. But congratulations, Councilmember Donovan, and highlighted your service to our country as a gunner on a Chinook helicopter in a location, but also the fact that I believe you have managed to not miss any city council meetings. And I think maybe we just, oh no, there he is. He's there. I thought maybe we lost him. Anyway, it was a very nice story and highlighted your service to our country and our community, so thank you. All right.
Thank you, Madam President.
Very nice. At this time, we will go to audience communication. I'm going to ask our council, city council parliamentarian, if she would be able to... For audience participation. And before you do that, Councilmember White, I would like to make sure everyone in the attending knows that if you do not have the current version of Zoom, you are not allowed to speak. That's not our rule. That is Zoom, that's how Zoom works technically. So if you attempt to speak and you have not updated your Zoom version, you will not be able to do so. So I would suggest that maybe you do so either before the audience communication at the end of the evening or before the next meeting. And with that, Councilmember White, our parliamentarian, would you please review the rules for audience communication?
Thank you, Madam President. So the rules governing this proceeding are as follows. Members of the public audience at the meeting shall not speak until they are recognized by the chair. Each person recognized by the chair to address the council shall identify himself or herself by name and, if appropriate, group affiliation. A person addressing council on an item on the agenda shall be limited to two minutes, unless the period of time is extended by a majority of the council president and shall be recognized to speak prior to council's consideration of the item. There will be an audience communication section of not more than 30 minutes duration at the beginning of all council regular and study meetings where citizens may address the council. There will also be an audience communication section at the end of all regular and study council meetings where citizens may address council on any matter that is not on the agenda of that meeting. Citizens who wish to expand upon their remarks will be asked to reduce the matter to writing and submit it to the city clerk, and such item may be placed on a future council meeting, council study session for further consideration. A person addressing council under the audience communication portion of the agenda will be limited to a total of three minutes at each study or regular meeting, unless the period of time is extended by a majority of the council president. Citizens who wish to expand upon their remarks again can put them in writing and submit them to the city clerk, and we can put that on a future council study session for further consideration. There will also be an audience communication section at the end of all regular and study council meetings where citizens may address council on any matter that is not on the agenda of that meeting. A citizen may address the council once during audience communication. If the citizen has addressed the council during the first audience communication period at the beginning of the meeting, the citizen will not be permitted to address the council again during any audience communication period at the end of the meeting. Anyone addressing the council shall make responsible comments, personal, impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks are not permitted, and anyone causing a breach of the peace may be removed from the council meeting. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Councilmember White. And before we go to audience communication, I would also, Councilmember White or parliamentarian, mentioned that you will be asked to give your name, your address, and the organization that you're speaking on behalf of. If you show up on Zoom as a slogan and not a name, you will be asked to provide a name before you are permitted to speak. All right, with that, I will go to audience communication and ask everyone in the audience who would like to comment on this evening's agenda, if they would like to take this opportunity to do so. All right. Good evening. We have Ryan Shiplett with us. Good evening, Mr. Shiplett.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for your time today. My name's Ryan Shiplett. I am a small business owner in Livonia. I own a company called My Fertilizing Company, and I own a company called RS Lawn Care. I'm also a resident. We service about 700 accounts from a weekly to a monthly basis. I've shared, Brandon McCullough, I'm sorry, Councilman McCullough is a friend of mine, and I've shared some concerns, some pictures of multiple trees throughout the entire city that are blocking yields and stop signs. I've called about concerns of these numerous times, and the city has told me that it is a responsibility of that person that lives at that house to call the city to have that tree trimmed. Well, I wanted to be on public record saying that there's been plenty of stop signs that I've almost went completely through. I'm very familiar with all the streets in the city, but they do change the stop signs and yield signs from time to time. But I have a one-year-old boy. I know Councilman McCullough has a four-year-old daughter. And I don't know how someone could live with themselves knowing that this can be completely avoided. It seems like negligence on the city. It seems like a lawsuit for the city waiting to happen. You know, like, I can't see that I would hold a homeowner responsibility when it's a city tree. This just puts a lot of people in jeopardy when it can be completely avoided. Part of my job, being a business owner, is seeing liability and things that can be avoided and trying to address those before they happen, and this can be completely avoided. So I'd just like to know what some of your input would be on that.
Thank you, Mr. Shiplett. Mr. Jolly, Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. This is actually something that I was thinking about over this last weekend. There are trees in the city that I've noticed that are overgrown, even covering up the sidewalk in many cases. And I do realize that it's the city's MO, modus operandi, to wait till the resident calls on their own behalf to have the trees trimmed. I think it's something we might want to look into, to be a little bit more proactive in this area and send out people to cut them and to inspect and kind of find out where these holes are, where the trees are overgrown, blocking signs, blocking sidewalk, and the whatnot. So I'll make a motion for a report and recommendation to the administration, how best that could be accomplished to make sure that the safety issues are accounted for. And I think also, I may be wrong about this, but I think the, we may have a millage in the city that might address this specifically as well, not this only, but among other things. So I'll make that motion. Thank you.
We have support from Councilmember Toy. Is there any discussion on Councilmember Jolly's motion? Vice President Barr?
Yeah, I know we don't want to get deep in discussion here, based, I mean, that motion will get a recommendation, but quick question for the city engineer, Todd Zalinsik, if I may. Todd, I, there are situations where the city just embarks on trimming programs for trees in the right of way without residents initiating it, aren't there? If not, please, this is an opportunity for me to learn, but I thought we sometimes took the initiative on that.
I would defer to the DPW Director, Don Rorap, on the protocol and procedures that they follow down there as they handle the tree trimming and what they allow or not allow. I know due to COVID, they were laid off until the end of June, so I'm not sure if there was a backlog of that or what's occurring out there, but they can probably give you the best information and correct information instead of me trying to divulge over on this meeting here. But they would be the best source of information to provide that to you guys as far as the procedures and protocol. Thank you.
Cool. All right, we'll look forward to getting their recommendation then. Thanks.
Anyone else? All right, then we could go ahead, please, Madam Clerk, and would you please take a vote on the motion offered by Councilmember Jolly and supported by Councilmember Toy to refer the subject to the administration for report and recommendation?
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Donovan?
Yes.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the subject will, the tree trimming will be referred to the administration for report and recommendation. Thank you. Would anyone else in the audience like to communicate with council? We have Alexandria H.
Hi, I have a question for Mayor Bronson.
Could you please, Alexandria, could you please identify yourself, your name?
Jolly.
Ellen?
Yes.
Okay, and audience communication, as you may recall, you have your opportunity to address the council. Apologize for that. But there's the council, nor the mayor, and this is audience communication, this is audience communications of the council. The mayor's not part of the council. You're certainly welcome to, if you have three minutes, to make any comments or questions, but there's no obligation and generally not a response, so please go ahead.
Okay, well, this question, I'll pose it to council and the mayor. There are black citizens that do live in Livonia, and they do have concerns about the police department. Is there any plans to, like, how do you guys plan to make sure those citizens feel safe? I mean, they are, we are a part of the other citizens, so I would assume you care about black citizens as well. So I'm just curious as to what you guys are planning to do.
Anyone want to make comments?
Madam President, if you don't mind, if I could just take a couple seconds and address Alexandria. First of all, it's not only what we're planning to do, Alexandria, it's what we've actually already done. There have been a number of things that the council, along with the mayor's office, have engaged in to make sure that everyone in our community is not only treated fairly, but kept safe. And for those who have particular concern about the police department, recently we had the opportunity to work with our police department to be a lot more transparent about information and data that is shared with the community. We have a new page on our website called PACT. It's the Police and Community Together page. And if you're looking for demographic data on arrests and crimes and, you know, all sorts of information, it is rather easy to find on that page. And we worked really hard to make sure that information was accessible so that people understood the strength of the police force here in our community. The second issue that we, the second thing that we did was we reactivated our Human Relations Commission. The Human Relations Commission is designed to help gather information from the community to make sure that community voices are heard on a regular basis and that if there is a groundswell of activity or interest or concern about a certain area, that commission then brings those concerns to my office. The second thing, or the third thing, rather, that we did was, in the police department again, was we put a new position in place where we now have an officer who is responsible for the professional standards of the police department. And this helps us to make sure that there's a central point at which all complaints are filed, all accolades are filed, because trust me, there are many of those in our city and in our police department as well. So those are just three of the things that we have concretely done. At the same time, we are working together with our police department to make sure that we have in place a department that really helps to address some of the issues on mental illness and with an understanding that, you know, a lot of what happens in the community, a lot of what's happening in communities all across the nation right now, are issues that stem from mental illness and also from just people that are just disgruntled and need a different kind of policing. So we're in the process of working with the department to put more social workers in place through our department, and we've been looking for a long time to be a pilot program in that area, and we're closer to getting that done than we were a couple months ago. So there's a lot going on and a lot of ways that we're working to address these needs and these comments such as yours in the community. We regularly talk about them, if you tune into the city's webpage, and to the police website as well.
So for the officer you have in place to review the complaints, that person reviews complaints of other officers and reprimands other officers as an officer? Or is there someone separate?
You know, Alexandria, this is the council's meeting, and I thought I was kind of helping out by just addressing that one set of questions. Should you wish to engage further on this, by all means, please contact my office. We'd be happy to talk to you.
You're muted, Kathleen. You're muted, Council President.
I'm trying, I mean, I think Casey muted everyone to eliminate background noise. Thank you. Next, we go to No Justice, No Peace, and we will ask you to give us your name, please.
Hi, my name is John Hillers. I'm a Livonia resident, and I also work in the city.
Madam President.
I would like to talk, I would like to...
Excuse me, Mr. Hillers, Mr. Donovan is calling for a point of order.
Thank you, Madam President. The graphic of the individual that is speaking, Mr. John Hillers, has what I believe to be a swastika inside of the actual graphic picture, which I think was offensive and has been brought to the attention of council before, last time he spoke. If you just look at the graphic, you can clearly see a swastika in the actual graphic.
I understand your concern, Mr. Donovan, and I think this would fall, and I'll ask the parliamentarian if she has a different view. I think this would fall under...
Free speech?
Our code of conduct about inappropriate or profane language or representation, and maybe the city attorney.
Well, while you discuss the free speech rights, can I finish with the three minutes?
Please wait. We're asking for some clarification.
I'll let the parliamentarian answer it first, and then I'll follow up if need be.
And the issue, the issue is, this is a symbol that's highly offensive to a very large group of people, including many in Livonia. So that's a question we're trying to issue, and we understand it in the context of free speech, which is why I'm asking about it.
And I understand the thin blue line flag that's in front of it as well.
Councilmember White? Well, our rules say personal, impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks. This falls under the category of offensive, so I don't know that it quite fits within our specific rules in terms of saying that, you know, that should be eliminated. It is offensive. I think everybody agrees about that. But we don't use the word offensive in our rules. Mr. Burnier?
I, as much as I want to disagree with Ms. White, I can't disagree with her. As offensive as it is to a great majority of the people, it does fall under the First Amendment, our First Amendment of speech rights at this point in time, and I don't think our rules prevent it at this time.
All right, thank you. I appreciate the inter, Mr. Donovan, appreciate your asking the question. All right, we'll return at this time to Mr. Hillers. Mr. Hillers?
And to clarify, a lot of us also find the thin blue flag flying, a thin blue line flag that's in front of the offensive and a clear representation of why it's of true purpose is. My comments to the council are, in the past six months, you have paid $260,000 for race-based, to cover up for race-based policing and racist cops. That officer who was involved in the incident in the meantime got a promotion. In 2019, there were 17 use-of-force complaints, use of force, apologies. Fourteen of those 17 involved somebody going through a mental disorder and a mental illness situation. I want to know, why are we paying officers to, basically, at least by the numbers it appears, to attack and beat up people who are sick? And is it not fiscally irresponsible to continue to pay out, at least in one case, a quarter of a million dollars, not to mention these six other cases that are pending for race-based policing while we are giving those officers who are doing the race-based policing promotions and paying them? And I also wanted to ask, I know this is for the council and not the mayor, but just to throw it out there. At the last budget meeting, I believe Mayor Bronson said that she's not interested in filling the position of the Office of Professional Standards, and I would encourage the council, since the race-based policing is costing so much of our tax dollars, to provide their oversight if we're not going to have any other oversight of the police department.
Mr. Hillers, I'd like to offer corrections. Number one, the mayor's statement was, I believe, that she's not interested in filling the Director of Public Safety position at the time, which, if there's not an appointee to that, the mayor holds that position. She never said she was not interested in filling, and as fact has filled, the Office of Professional Standards of the police department. And your characterization of attacks on people with mental illness is absolutely incorrect, and the data does not bear that out, so.
So of the 14 that are experiencing mental illness where police are using force, what's the force for? And wouldn't the citizens of Livonia be better served by a professional mental health care person being sent with those officers when they get the mental health call? So that way, they're not using force on somebody going through a mental illness.
Mr. Hillers, use of force includes any time that an officer has to apply any sort of, any sort of physical interaction with another, with a citizen. That includes, that use of force included, I believe, at least one instance and maybe two of people who are mentally ill and a position to jump over one of the overpasses on I-96, pulling that person to safety. So again, the characterization of use of force as an attack is characteristically false or flatly false. So thank you for...
You're making yourself very clear, and we obviously know where you stand.
Excuse me. I don't know if you have any other, I don't know if anyone else from the council would like to address your statements. All right, anything else? All right, thank you, Mr. Hillers. Moving on to Trish Duckworth. Good evening, Ms. Duckworth.
Good evening. I hope everyone and your families are well. I'm thankful to be here with you all. Wanted to talk to you briefly tonight about an oversight commission. We do understand that the council's stance right now is that there is not an oversight commission that's needed and that the data doesn't support it. We have seen that the data does support it, and we have instances recorded of things that we think are questionable that have happened by the police department. One being when the owner of Wingstop pulled a saw out on a customer. And people think, oh, you know, that that's okay. It's not okay. The police showed up to the scene, they took the saw, and they would not arrest this individual and have still not done anything to this day. That is considered brandishing a weapon. When you brandish a weapon, that is a crime. It is a felony, actually. And so the fact that nothing was done, the officer showed up and demeaned the family, I just think that that instance right there, there needed to be some oversight. And the fact that the chief wouldn't even talk to the family, they reached out to the chief to try to find some resolve. The chief wasn't available. The chief was never available. How are you a public servant and you're not available? Again, this, to us, means that there needs to be some oversight. So we understand differing opinions. I mean, that people think that Livonia is not that bad as far as racism is concerned. However, why not put some measures in place before there's a big problem? It wouldn't cost anything to have an oversight commission. That much, you already have individuals who have formed and would love to be on this oversight committee. And so just to have those extra measures in place to ensure that there's not a problem, because we can all say there's no problem, but why not get to the bottom of it? And having an oversight commission would, in fact, get to the bottom of if there's an issue or not, or have something in place when an issue arises so that the people can feel comfortable to report and get reports about what the police do. Again, we understand differing opinions, and we're just asking this council just to please consider putting the oversight commission in place so that the citizens of Livonia can know that they are safe. You know, there is, I think, about 4% or 5% African-American...
Thirty seconds left.
It doesn't matter how many African-Americans are there in Livonia. We want to make sure that they are safe as well. Thank you all for your time, and again, please consider putting an oversight commission in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duckworth. I know that Vice President Barr would like to speak. Before I go to Vice President Barr, I'd just like to leave this up in the previous audience communication, the issue of referring to the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office, and it was the prosecutor's office who declined the press conference, so I wanted to clarify that, and that's important point of information. Vice President Barr?
Thank you, Madam President. This may...
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Um, this may be a good opportunity to bring something up that I've actually been thinking about for the last couple of months. Um, and with Ms. Duckworth bringing it up, it's appropriate time to, to just mention this. Of, of all the things that we've heard over the last few months, there's been a lot to consider. Um, had an opportunity to, to meet privately with, with a number of people, Ms. Duckworth being one of them, um, and, and have some really good discussions. And, and this, this notion of accountability, I, I, it is something I've spent a lot of time thinking about. Um, anytime we're talking about a governmental entity, um, in this case, it may be the police department, but, but anywhere else, um, accountability is very important. We're all familiar with the concept of checks and balances that's interwoven throughout our entire system of government. And, um, a-actually, I'll just, I'll just acknowledge that the first time this occurred to me was with one of our previous speakers tonight, when she was with us several months ago and shared a story with us, um, about, about an incident that had happened. And I said to her in that meeting, I said, well, did you, I would hope that you file the complaint with our police department so that could be investigated. Um, and it was sometime after that that I realized I wasn't actually even sure how to do that. Um, and, and I've brought this question up before, and it's been pointed out that people can reach out to council or can reach out to the mayor's office, or can reach out to the police department directly. That's, that's certainly true. Um, but I, I do think when it comes to accountability, um, that it is a legitimate question to ask that when we have investigations of the police department that start and end within the police department, um, it's legitimate to ask whether that's real accountability. And, and part of the reason that it's, it's a good, I feel that it's in some ways easier for me to bring this up now is because I do have so much confidence in our current police chief and our police department. Um, I, he's a man of integrity. I think he runs, I, I, I firmly believe that, uh, that those investigations are carried out with, with total integrity. That being said, um, the process as it stands now starts and ends in the police department. And I, I'm just going to flow this out here. I know the mayor's on here who, who is over the police department. Um, I'm not necessarily looking for a response, but, but just as we're having a discussion here, I think the, there are some simple things that we could do, um, i- beginning with, with the website, to make it more clear where to file a complaint if someone has one to begin that process. And I also think it would be helpful, even though in practice this may happen, um, I think it'd be helpful that when a form is filled out or whatever, that there's just an acknowledgement on there that says, um, this is being sent to the mayor's office, um, and, and, and so that we have the, these complaints handled, starting in the mayor's office. Now, at that point, it might be sent over to the police department. I, I think it'd be appropriate for it to be, and for it to go through their normal process. But when we talk about civilian oversight, uh, we, we do have civilian oversight in the city, and, and it's called the mayor. And I'm not necessarily talking about Mayor Brosnan in particular, although she is obviously the mayor now. But I'm just, I'm just saying in general, whoever's in that mayor's office, that is a civilian from the community who's been elected on behalf of the people to oversee the administration of the city, um, including the, the police department. In fact, um, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but I think even the Director of Public Safety that was referenced earlier, um, you know, the decision was made, I, made, I believe, in a past administration for, for the mayor to essentially fill that role. Um, and, and so I think technically that's what the case is right now. So, we do, while there may, civilian oversight can make, take different forms. It's not that we don't have it now, we do. And, um, I, I just think there's some simple things we could do to, to make it easier for complaints to be filed for residents that would want to do it, and to make it clear that those are being, that they're routing at some point through the mayor's office, even, even just so it's clear that, um, that that civilian oversight is in place. So, certainly more discussion we could have on that. We're not going to solve that all here, but, uh, with Ms. Duckworth's question, it seemed like an appropriate time to, to mention that, which had been rolling over in my mind for a couple of months. So, thank you, Madam President.
I'm sorry. We'll go to Amanda Marie. Good evening.
Hi, Council. Can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, um, my name's Amanda Chrysler. I've been speaking the last couple of months here. Um, it's nice to see you two, Mayor Brosnan, tonight. So now that I have all of you together, um, I wanted to ask or talk about why Livonia seems to be one of the only cities in Wayne County, not the only, but one of the last. And, uh, even though the state has declared racism a public health crisis, Livonia's elected officials still seem to be dragging their feet on it for some reason. Um, we were told that you weren't doctors, but that's not really a doctor's place to declare a health crisis for a city. They have done studies and declared it in general. Um, so, after multiple public health studies, we do know that there is a health risk and there are health inequities, um, to being black. And more recently, they've proven that they don't just affect poor black people, but they also affect black people across class lines as well. So, a black man making the same amount of money as one of our councilmen is going to statistically be affected health-wise by being black, more so than their white counterparts. Um, black women are, for times, more likely to die of pregnancy-related complications. Um, and black men are more than twice as likely to be killed by police as white men are. And the average life expectancy of black Americans is four years lower than the rest of the population. So, declaring racism a public health crisis, um, the designations are meant to spur changes across all sectors of government, including criminal justice, education, health, uh, housing, transportation, which Livonia has none of. Um, there's no transportation. We all know that it's to keep people from other cities out. Uh, there's not really much affordable housing, and the affordable housing we do have is all clustered together. Um, it's supposed to affect the budgets and the taxes with the goal of shrinking the health gap between black Americans and white Americans.
Thirty seconds left.
Um, and I was just wondering why the council and the elected officials in Livonia don't seem to be interested in shrinking that health gap and in designating parts of the budget and parts of the government to specifically deal with the public health crisis of racism.
You're muted, Kathleen.
Thank you. We're having background noises. We have background noise issues this evening that's causing some complications. Uh, next we'll go to Heather, and, uh, this will be our last, where our thirty minutes is-
Nope, I gotta talk right now.
This will be our last, uh, this will be our last pursuit during our audience communication for this session. We will go back to audience communication at the end of the regular meeting. Good evening, Heather.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you. Um, my name is Heather, and just for the record, I don't disclose my last name or address because the last time I did that at a city council meeting, I received hate mail. So, thanks, Livonia. Um, I would like to make some community announcements, and some of this echoes what was said by, uh, my friend, Mr. Hillers. But in case anyone listening is not aware, last month, the city of Livonia settled a case against them and paid $260,000 to Christopher Bay. This settlement was paid because the Livonia Police Officer, Sergeant Andrew McKinley, violated Mr. Bay's Fourth and Fourteenth Amendment rights. As a refresher, this means Sergeant McKinley stopped him without reasonable suspicion of criminal activity, and they investigated and ultimately stopped him because of his race. Chief Cade has publicly stated that Livonia Police Department is the constitutional law enforcement agency. Why then are our officers violating people's constitutional rights? Further, why is Sergeant McKinley still employed with Livonia Police when it seems that he forgot or ignored one of the most basic parts of his training? Why was he promoted while he was still part of an ongoing court case?
Uh, excuse me. Heather, uh, we're going to ask you, our rules do, um, require that you refrain from personal, uh, personal attacks. If, if you want to make comments, that's fine, but, um, attacks on specific people with the city or anyone else are not permitted in our rules. So, continue, please.
Okay, there were no attacks, but I'll continue. In addition, I would like to know if the council thinks this officer's behavior is acceptable, and if they are satisfied with $260,000 of the city's funds going to this during the COVID-19 pandemic's negative impacts on the city budget. And Kathleen, let me help you out by first acknowledging the council has no obligation to respond.
Thank you for your comments. Seeing, uh, no one wishing to respond, that will conclude the first audience communication session for this evening. And with that, we move ahead with our agenda, and we will go to, uh, reports from the mayor and other city officials. I know that the mayor has some information she'd like to share this evening. Good evening again, Mayor President.
Good evening, uh, Council President and Council. Um, I'm glad to be here tonight. Um, and as the Council President indicated, one of the things that, um, I wanted to be sure to do this evening was to start off by introducing, um, our new Director of Legislative Affairs, LaShawn Thomas. Um, I'm especially excited because, um, this is the first appointment that I've had a chance to make as mayor. And, um, LaShawn comes to us with an exceptional background in the area of advocacy that I think is going to position her ideally as the Director of Legislative Affairs for a city, as we work to, um, build and enhance our profile on both a state and a national basis, um, with our legislators. Uh, LaShawn comes to us from Trinity Health, where she was an advocacy analyst, um, both as a liaison and a resource in, uh, the healthcare system, which you know as just an incredible amount of legislation and, um, public policy coming its way. So, she managed to juggle all that. She started there in 2009, and we were fortunate enough to drag her our way, uh, recently. So, we're excited about that. Um, you'll see LaShawn regularly at your meetings. Uh, she is the primary point of contact between my office and yours. And, um, as the lead administrator, um, with the city council, um, she will be a regular feature at your meetings. So, I'm really excited. Um, LaShawn comes to us with a really strong background, um, in, in journalism, uh, broadcast journalism, as a matter of fact. An area that, um, I started in as well, so I have a particular affinity, uh, for people with that background. Um, and West, Western, uh, West Virginia University is where she hails from. Uh, she lives in, uh, Redford. Uh, her two children went to Clarenceville. Her oldest son is graduated now and off at Michigan State. So, um, go Spartans, that's another plus. Um, and her daughter is currently at the Clarenceville Middle School. So, um, in her spare time, LaShawn is very active with her sorority, and she volunteers on a number of community programs. Uh, breast cancer is a particular i- issue, uh, that she's focused some time and attention on, as well as, um, heart health and care for caregivers. So, we are especially excited to have her joining us, and, uh, I'm going to let her, um, introduce herself just a little bit further here. And then when she's done, I've got a couple more issues that I just want to bring you up to speed on. LaShawn, it's all yours. These are, these are some fantastic people that you're going to share your work with. So, welcome.
Oh, thank you. Thank you all so much. Um, I really appreciate this opportunity, and I am so excited to be able to use my background in advocacy um, to make sure our lawmakers are well-versed in the issues that are happening and our needs in Livonia. Um, I truly consider it an honor to, um, work with all of you, and I am very much looking forward to it, and I appreciate all of your support as I take on this new and exciting role.
Thank you, LaShawn. Appreciate that. Um, so the two other items, um, that I wanted to, uh, comment on this evening is, um, first of all, our, uh, COVID-19 emergency response, um, in the city of Livonia, all cities all over Michigan. Um, you know, we found that we had some, we were facing some changes, uh, this past weekend on Friday when the Michigan Supreme Court in a four-three vote decided, um, that they were going to rule against, uh, the governor's orders, uh, indicating that she had overstepped the state authority in declaring a legislative emergency. So, um, over the course of the weekend, and as late as 1:30 this afternoon, um, our emergency response team, as well as the leadership team within the city, um, has been getting together around what does that mean, uh, for the city of Livonia? Uh, what does that in particular mean for many of the, um, you know, guidelines and, uh, some of the, uh, rules and regulations that we've put in place and, and some of how we've operated, um, under the governor's, um, under the governor's orders. Um, and then, of course, um, because it, you know, nothing stays the same in this world of managing the COVID emergency. Around five o'clock today, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, um, put in place many, put back in place many of the governor's original orders. So, um, we will be back with you on what all of this means. And I think by just way of wanting, first of all, to acknowledge that we are on top of it, uh, that we're trying to stay on top of it, and it is a moving target. Um, but one of the things that I want to assure you of right now is that in the course of putting guidelines in place for the city of Livonia, we used a lot of discretion in making sure that we were adhering to the Centers for Disease Control guidelines and recommendations. So, much of what we already have in place is still what is being recommended, uh, by that agency. And, um, anything that we do, um, any of the orders that, um, you know, we work to maintain and work to, uh, reinforce are going to be orders that are coming to us from the Centers for Disease Control. Um, those seem to be, um, some pretty basic things that are going to help us tackle issues like uh, safety guidelines for masks and social distancing, and when we have to do temperature checks when we're all in public buildings. Um, we'll be talking about specifics around programs and services that are offered at our rec center, at Green Need, at our libraries, and to a limited degree, the pro, limited programs that are being offered at our senior centers as well. Um, so, you know, again, this is just a, a moving target. Um, but we're going to work really hard to make sure that we keep Livonia safe and making sure that we understand what specific needs may be, um, central to Livonia, uh, more critical to Livonia than perhaps other communities. Um, as, you know, we all recall, we were the hardest-hit community outside the city of Detroit, uh, when the COVID outbreak really, uh, was at its peak. And we wish very much that that's not going to happen again. So, it's going to take some work on our part to make sure that it doesn't happen again. And, uh, we'll be looking, working alongside, um, the state and the county, um, and our health departments to make sure that whatever guidelines we put in place are designed to make sure that we protect and keep Livonia residents, as well as our employees, safe. So, we will be back in touch with you hopefully sometime later this week as, uh, much of the dust begins to settle from, um, the Supreme Court decision and now the Department of Health and Human Services, um, edict that's been put out. The second big issue that I know that you're hearing about, just as much as we're hearing about in the mayor's office, is what are we going to do about Halloween? Um, you know, a lot of tradition gets built around the Halloween holiday, and a lot of that tradition, um, i- is based on local traditions. So, um, while we are not going to be canceling Halloween in Livonia, um, we are again going to be working with our, um, Health and Human Services Department, as well as the CDC guidelines, in putting forward some of our best recommendations for how we might be able to do Halloween safely in Livonia. And as you can well imagine, uh, there are a lot of very creative people on the leadership team that are giving thought to, um, not only how we recommend best that people, um, celebrate the holiday, but, um, you know, if there's any way at all that the city can help in that regard, um, we're looking to do that as well. So, we'll be back in touch with you on both of those issues. And that's it.
Muted, Kathleen.
I'll get this by the end of the night. Um, again, thank you very much, Mayor, and if there are no other reports from, any other city officials, and I don't see that we have any, we will move on then to our, um, consent agenda. And, um, that's items one through nine this evening. Items one through nine, as I mentioned on the consent agenda, it doesn't mean that they are any less important than any other items. They're voted on as one item, uh, and they were determined in our last study meeting not to have been controversial in nature, and that's why they are placed together as one item on the consent agenda. Council?
I'm on. I can support.
Support from Councilmember McCullough. And, um, Madam Clerk, would you please go to the vote? Take the vote.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the consent agenda is, uh, it passes unanimously.
President McIntyre?
I'm sorry.
Do the presentation of the minutes from the last meeting and from the special meeting?
No, that would be, uh, that would be nice if I did that, wouldn't it? Um, before we go to spend the rolls, we'll- to spend the rolls, we'll go to an item which should have taken place after we took the roll. And that is presentation for of the minutes and approval for the 1,905th regular meeting of the city council was held on September 21st, 2020. Counsel.
Second.
Support from Jolly. Any discussion, any corrections? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on the approval of the minutes from the September 21st meeting?
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye. And the minutes of the regular meeting of September 21st are approved. And at this... Whoa. What happened?
She's frozen. There you are.
There you go. Did you hear that or do I need to repeat?
Repeat it.
All right. At this time, I would ask, so the minutes of the regular meeting of September 21st are approved. At this time, I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of September, Monday, September 28th.
So move.
Barr and... Support. Support from Councilmember Toy. Any comments or corrections? Then Madam Clerk, could you please go ahead and take the vote on approval of the minutes of the special meeting of September 28th?
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Present.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye. And the minutes of the special meeting are approved. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, for bringing that important mission to my attention. At this time, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rolls.
So move.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Barr. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on the request to schedule a closed committee of the whole meeting? Suspend, suspend the rules. We already suspended the minutes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye. And the rules are suspended. So, at this time, we go to the first X item and this is item X1. This is request to schedule a closed committee of the whole meeting. This comes to us from the office of the mayor for the purpose of discussing negotiations of collective bargaining agreements. Counsel?
So move. Second.
White and Jolly, any discussion? All right. With that, Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on the request to schedule a closed committee of the whole meeting?
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye. The motion is approved and we will schedule a closed committee of the whole meeting. With that, we move on to item X2. This is request to accept grant funding from the Center for Tech and Civic Life, CTCL, and approval of additional appropriation and expenditure. This comes to us from the office of the city clerk to help meet the increased expenses and expenditures to oversee and administer the November 3rd, 2020 general election. Counsel?
Move.
Moved by Toy?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Donavick. Any discussion? Councilmember Toy?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to thank you very much to our city clerk for applying for this grant. And these appropriations will help with this overwhelming election of, I think there's about 35,000 absentee ballots if I'm not mistaken. And I would like to thank all her staff, and I know we all thank them, for all the tireless energy they're doing weekend and weekday out. And I know the red box is getting pretty used. They gotta empty it quite a bit. And so, you know, it's, it's a real learning experience, I'm sure. And I'd just like to say thank you very much. This money will be put to good use in that clerk's office. Thank you, Madam Clerk and Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Toy. Anyone else? Uh, Councilmember Jolly?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll just reiterate what Ms. Toy said. Susan Nash is, is really as good as it gets in terms of a city clerk for any city like this. I'll note that many other cities received grant funding, but we received tens of more dollars in, in this application process than anybody else did. It's a significant attribute that Ms. Nash, number one, applied for, but then her proposal received far more money to provide for more initiative and processes here in terms of improvements for the residents in Livonia. I think we can all thank her publicly and she's going to have a well-deserved break coming up here in maybe two months, maybe for a day or so. And then we'll get started again, given her trial. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Jolly. Anyone else? Yes, please, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Jolly and thank you, Councilmember Toy. As excited as I am and to get this grant, I also want to make sure that everyone's aware. A lot happened also because of the deputy Lori Miller. She was the one, we got the email. I was not in the office. So, she saw the email. She called the law department and said, can I start this without her? Do I have the authority? And Paul Burnier promptly said yes. So, then when I was back in, we went through the numbers and added some things. We are very excited. And one of the things really is going to help us is it's giving us the ability to pay hazard pay to workers. We have been short workers. We had a problem with getting workers in August. And we're able to pay $100 a person extra for hazard pay. And we have full numbers right now since that word got out. That has helped a lot. And I'm very happy about that because it makes our jobs a lot easier. And yes, as Councilmember Toy said, we do have over 35,000 absentee ballots out right now. We, we're prob, I know we're the eighth largest. I think we're somewhere around the eighth with that number, if not the seventh. And we are working every day. It's kind of feels like Groundhog Day in a way. I walk in here every day and I can't remember what day it is because I was here the day before and the day before and the day before. But I do want to mention that we did have our new box installed outside. You can still utilize the red box if you want, but there is a box right next to it. It's a ballot box that was courtesy of the Wayne County Commissioners. And that we are all emptying that constantly throughout the day, as well as one inside the lobby. And I know it was put in the newspaper earlier this week, but I have everybody that's wearing lanyards now that notify people that they are election workers, especially if someone's outside emptying the box. If it gives any peace of mind for any of the residents when they come up that yes, this is an election personnel that is there, not just anybody emptying the box, that it is someone with the election department. So, again, I'd like to thank you for taking this as an X item, but I wanted to make sure that we had the approval so we can accept the grant and we can go ahead and spend it on this election. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice President Barr?
Yeah, just to the chair to Clerk Nash, if I may. And I, I had actually written down just a few questions from my own education. I'm scrambling here to find those notes and I can't find them. So, I'm going to go off memory. What is the source of this grant funding?
The name of the source is the Center for Tech and Civic Life. It is civic life, I'm sorry. It is not any federal funds. It's not any tax dollar funds. It is a group, I'm not exactly sure, some of it, I think Mark Zuckerberg might be part of it. And this is something that I think every community has applied for, almost every community. And as Councilmember Jolly put it, we're one of the larger, we were getting, we got one of the larger amounts. I actually was very surprised when we got the award letter and very happy to receive it.
Do you, do you have an idea as to why that was? That we were, because I remember seeing the numbers you had sent. It was significant how much more we got than other communities. Do you know what the reason for that was?
A couple of things I've been told is, A, what we applied for, that we put forward and what we're asking for. And that's the equipment to be able to handle, the amount of absentee ballots that we have, the amount of workers we are going to need to be able to process this. And I believe some of it was done, they had a formula that the, the grant, the grantees had, the granters, I'm sorry, the grantor had. And we got 100% of what we were asking. And I know around here, the only communities, Detroit got considerably more. They're also considerably larger. Westland got a little more and Dearborn, Dearborn and they kind of also looked at different challenges. But I think with us was the quantity and the size and the voter turnout. And so, this way we can...
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to just take a moment, give some kudos out. Thank you, Ms. Nash and your team. You guys, the communication on all social media, you're almost like the trailblazers in the innovative clerks department in the, in the metro area. And then a big shout out to obviously the Wayne County Commission for, for dropping that second box off. But you guys do an incredible job and you don't, you don't get applauded enough. So, I just wanted to take a moment and thank you and your staff for everything you do.
Thank you very much. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCullough. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, we could go ahead, please, and take the vote on the acceptance of the grant and the approval of additional appropriation and expenditure.
Council, I'm sorry, Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy? Councilmember...
Aye, aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye. And the item is approved. And with that, we go back to audience communication. If there's anyone in the audience who did not have an opportunity to communicate with the council during the first audience communication, you have another opportunity. And I see with Beth Bailey. Go ahead. I'm trying to, let's see, there we go. Oh.
Am I, you hear me?
Yes. Good evening, Ms. Bailey.
Hi there. My name is Beth Bailey. Thank you for being here as we continue these tough conversations on race and more importantly, racism in Livonia. My statement is a reflection on a quote from Iris Marion Young. "If one thinks about racism by examining only one wire of the cage or one form of disadvantage, it's difficult to understand how and why the bird is trapped. Only a large number of wires arranged in a specific way and connected to one another serve to enclose the bird and to ensure it cannot escape." It's not unusual for us to over-focus on just one bar of the cage, typically the bar that is individual bigotry. This is a mistake. It's important to recognize how individual bigotry intersects with hiring practices, voting choices, loan decisions, educational experiences. It is through these intersections that the cage is made effective. The cage is still an enclosure even when a single bar is removed. Removing the bar of individual bigotry from our hearts does not remove old policies. It does not address the racial wealth gap that makes homeownership unaffordable to black families. It does not bring busing into our neighborhoods. It does not change police officer patrol routes away from the few areas in the city occupied by black people, nor does it change the fact that less than 4% of Livonia's population is black. One of the lies of white supremacist ideology is that racial disparities are explainable by something other than racist actions and racist policies. The disparity in citation records, the minimal presence of black people in Livonia, health and education disparities. White supremacist ideologies tell us that these are the natural result of fair practices. Eradicating our own internalized racism means rejecting the narratives of white supremacy. The work that this council can begin and that the city of Livonia needs to continue to do is to identify and interrogate racial disparities in the city, to reject this comfortable narrative that these are the results of the natural order of things, and to create policies which begin to close these gaps. Livonia Police Department data reveal one racial disparity that exists in Livonia, a pattern of policing which results in racist outcomes. It is time to inter, interrogate why this disparity exists and identify corrective action.
Thirty seconds left.
This is a big task and one that needs to be undertaken by a group of individuals who are qualified to conduct data analysis, to build community-based programs, and to craft policies. This type of group is typically referred to as a citizens oversight committee or commission, and I urge the council to consider establishing one. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? I see that the question is Dougworth, but as stated, the rules, individuals only have one opportunity to address the council either at the session, at the beginning of the meeting, or at the end. You do not have two opportunities. So, if there's no one else who wishes to address the council, last opportunity to do so. All right. I would call for a motion to adjourn. I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Uh, Jolly and supported by Donavick. And that, at 8:07, we are adjourned and we will reconvene at 8:20 for the regular, I'm sorry, for the study meeting. Thank you, Livonia. See you in thirteen minutes.